Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Meeting this January 18, 2022. Thank you all for being here tonight. For those of you who are here for the first time, let me explain that we have a little format that we follow. After we begin with the pledge, we have certain presentations that we have that we usually recognize individuals, events, or organizations that are important to our community. So we have a couple of those tonight. And so before we begin, let us start with our Pledge of Allegiance. So can I ask you all to please rise and follow along with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting its City Commission Meetings now in person. For additional information on how to view the meeting, I invite you all to please visit www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. Now, to ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. And secondly, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up in the City Hall Lobby. A member of the City Clerk's Office staff will be there to assist. I've got a couple of people planning to speak on a couple of the items already. So now, with regard to the agenda, first, before we do that, could please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yeah.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Not present at the moment.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trentalis?
Here. With regard to the agenda, does anyone have any items on the consent agenda they would like to have pulled? Vice Mayor?
No.
No? Commissioner Glassman?
No, sir.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Nope.
Okay, now, if there's anyone who is interested in speaking on any of the consent agenda items, now would be the time for you to raise your hand and let me know, because nobody has signed up with the City Clerk. So is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on any of the consent agenda items, since none have been pulled? Okay, there aren't none. So do I hear a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded? Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor, can we do the approval of the minutes on the agenda?
We'll do that.
Okay.
We'll do that in a moment.
For consent, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Not present.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So let's have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Not present.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So tonight's, so the minutes from the previous meeting have now been approved as well as, do we need to do a second approval of minutes on the BIMR workshop? You have that here.
No, that was, that was what we approved already.
I'm sorry?
That's what we approved for the minutes.
It wasn't the previous meeting?
No.
Okay. Want to clarify that. All right. We have two presentations tonight, one which I have the honor of making tonight, declaring tonight. Where is Hal? Are you in the audience? Hal Barnes? Oh, there you are. And then I would invite, oh, we have three tonight. Okay, we'll get to those. Mr. Barnes, could you please approach the podium with me? Oh, my God, I gotta read this whole thing. Okay, very good, thank you. So tonight is a very special night for those of us who work with the city and have known Hal Barnes for his many, many years of service here on behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale. He's taken on many roles, and he certainly made his mark on this, on this city with all the years of work and commitment. And tonight, it is my honor to be able to recognize Hal Barnes for his 25 years of dedicated service. Wow. So from the office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale, this is a proclamation in recognition of Hal Barnes and his 25 years of dedicated service. In December of 1996, wow, when Hal started his career in the, in the mailroom, no, just kidding.
Mailroom.
Okay. The Public Works Department initially joined the team as a project engineer, then transitioned into the role of Engineering Design Manager. And under his guidance, over $15 million in citywide community enhancements were implemented, ranging from entranceway signage and monuments to transportation improvements, including sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, and traffic calming measures. In January of 2012, when the Neighbor Support Division was created, Hal was appointed as the first Neighbor Support Manager. Many city programs and events known for their local impact were developed under Hal's leadership to connect with neighbors, including the Neighborhood Support Night, Neighborhood Recognition Program, the Block Party Program, Adopt a Neighbor, Adopt a Drain, and nationally-recognized Neighbor Leadership Academy. Hal and his team also established the Lobby Art Gallery, a rotating monthly exhibit which allows local artists to showcase their talents here in City Hall. And I invite you all to go visit our lobby and see this month's exhibit. Hal is a celebrated member of our city staff. In October of 2005, he received a proclamation from this commission for pioneering support services to neighborhoods, desiring to improve and beautify their communities. In November of the following year, he also received a commendation from the City Commission for his leadership in bringing the 2006 Florida Neighborhoods Conference to Fort Lauderdale. Hal's achievements during his, this time with the city are also recognized on the state and national level for the last 20 years. He served on the Board of Directors of the Florida Neighborhoods Conference, and he was an active participant in the Neighborhoods USA for over 15 years, serving on the National Board for over six, and was Chair of the Awards and Membership Services Committee. Hal's vision and direction of the Neighborhood Support Division has resulted in over 25 national, state, and local awards recognizing their programs and projects. Hal is looking forward to spending time with his friends and family and chartering trips to Rio de Janeiro and Hawaii. Okay.
Big dreams.
The friendships and bonds he created with our neighbors from Rio and Hawaii, and our neighbors will continue with our neighbors, and then will continue into his retirement. Hal's legacy has left a profound impact on the neighborhoods throughout the city of Fort Lauderdale, and the community will continue to thrive with the ongoing commitment of the Neighborhood Support Team. Finally, after a quarter century, Hal Barnes will retire today. Not quite. January 22, 2022, but you can take the next few days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, therefore, we, as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim January 22, 2022, as Hal Barnes Day. And in the city of Fort Lauderdale, we commend his dedication and service to supporting the neighbors in the city and wish him the best in his retirement in Rio de Janeiro and Hawaii. Signed this day, January 18, 2022, by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis. Congratulations, Hal.
Thank you, sir.
I say a few words.
And Commissioners, I am deeply honored by this. It's unexpected, but I do appreciate it. And I just want to make sure that everyone out here knows I deeply appreciate working with everyone these past few years. 25 years, it went by pretty quick. And building Neighbor Support, you know, starting 12 years ago, we built it into an incredible division. Chris, thank you for your leadership. It's been so appreciated. Tarlisha, Greg, thank you for your support, all the department heads and the city staff. You can't ask for better city staff than we have. The neighborhoods, I've been working with the neighborhoods my entire career. Huge thank you to the Council of Civic Associations, all the neighborhood presidents. I hope we've been able to improve your communities. Can't get away without saying a huge thank you to my incredible Neighbor Support Team. Past, present, there's a few people in here that have come through Neighbor Support and moved on to different roles in the city. Big thank you, Jania. I know you're here somewhere. You've been my right hand for, what, 10 years now? Filling in when I can't be there, thank you so much. Thank you. I do want to say a special thank you to what I consider four of the most impressive women in the city, that I wouldn't be here today without their support, their friendship. First of all is Joanne Smith, Women's Club. Joanne, would you please stand? And of course, Annette Ross, Harbor Beach. Annette? I know Jerry's here somewhere, the infamous Jerry Pryor. And a special thank you to Gina Ellis, Riverwalk Trust. Yeah. Thank you, Gina. You've been with me the entire time. So thank you, everybody. I accept this for everyone here in the room and everyone in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor.
Something for you. In addition to, so in addition to this fabulous proclamation, you see for the presentation, this token of appreciation thanking you for your 25 years of outstanding devotion and service to our community. Don't come too close to it. Why don't I hold that?
Okay.
Because you also have the little greeting card.
Yeah.
All right. Are there more ladies with you?
Yes.
Let's take a picture just with us and then.
We got you.
Deanna.
And.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
Give me a hand.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't expect this.
I know.
Careful.
Right.
Just.
Yeah.
Ready? Two. Four? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations, Hal.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow for the party.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, Jerry.
This is your chance.
Always. When I'll come back. Right.
It's okay, thank you. Civil Engineers, Broward Branch, will present the 2021 Large Project of the Year Award for the Horizontal Directional Drilling to the City of Fort Lauderdale Public Works Department. Is a representative from the American Society of Civil Engineers here? Come on up. And I guess Alan, since you're the head of Public Works. Sir, you want to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Beckman, and I am the current branch president of the ASE Broward Branch. For those of you that don't know, ASE stands for the American Society of Civil Engineers. This is our 52nd year as an active professional organization in Broward County. Each year, we host our annual Officer Installation and Awards Banquet, not only induct our executive board, but also recognize individuals and products that have made a difference in our community and the world of civil engineering. On behalf of the ASE Broward Branch, it was with great honor to recognize the City of Fort Lauderdale for the redundant lines horizontal directional drilling as the 2021 ASE Large Project of the Year. This project is a true testament to the importance of engineering and what can be accomplished when multiple parties come together to achieve a common goal. To provide some background on the project, back in December of 2019, the City of Fort Lauderdale experienced numerous breaks to its aging seven-mile sewer transmission main, resulting in over 200 million gallons of sewage spilling into nearby waterways. After these breaks, the city declared an emergency and awarded two design-build contracts within two months of the first break, utilizing the design-build method. To expedite the process, the project was divided into north and south sections and was awarded to two teams to design, permit, and construct each phase concurrently. This emergency pipeline procurement project included the installation of a new seven-mile, large-diameter HDPE force main. To expedite installation and based on previous successful projects, approximately six miles of HDPE pipe was installed using transits technology, using 17 horizontal directional drillings through the heart of downtown Fort Lauderdale and adjacent residential areas. This project's original schedule was set at 49 months. Using design-build delivery, transits technology, and HDPE pipe, the project was completed within 18 months, a very impressive feat considering it's been completed during an ongoing pandemic. Now, I don't want to leave anybody else. I want to acknowledge all parties involved that played a role in the success of this project. The City of Fort Lauderdale, Hazen &amp; Sawyer, Chenmore &amp; Associates, A&amp;P Consulting Transportation Engineers, Craven Thompson &amp; Associates, Murphy Pipeline Contractors, David Mancini &amp; Sons, DBE Utility Services, and Centerline Directional Drilling. Thank you all, and congratulations. We cannot think of any more deserving of this award.
Are any of the folks that, that the gentleman just mentioned, David Mancini, David Mancini Jr., Richard Mancini, Onique Williams, Christian Candile, or Richard Crowe here in the audience? Why don't you come on up, be part of all this? Why don't you folks come on up and? Okay, great. Thank you so much, folks. All right, so we move on to M1. This is regarding a motion approving an event agreement related to road closures and requests for music exemptions on January 23 and January 30, and retroactive approval for January 9 and January 16, the event dates for the Nobi Sunday Block Party. That's District One. What are you doing up there?
Oh, just fixing some little mistake from last time.
Yeah, man, this one was a staff issue where we thought they had approval for the month of January. So when we brought this before you at the last meeting, we brought February through April, recognizing after the fact that they did not have January. So rather than get in the way of their event, we're asking you to approve retroactively that I allowed them to continue on January 9 and 16. And this just adds the dates of January 23 and 30 so that they do have formal approval.
Okay. Would you like to make the motion?
Please, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions?
Mayor, sorry, did, I might have missed this. Did Presentation Three get?
That was taken off the.
Was taken off. Okay, sorry, I missed that. Thanks.
Commissioner, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Not present.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And M1 is approved. R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes. For the names to appear on the February 1, 2022 Resolution, Consensus for the Insurance Advisory Board, we have Joseph J. Pachura, Sr., nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Mark Schwartz, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Steve Botkin, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, Jonathan Perillo, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Ted Hess, Sr., nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. For the Nuisance Abatement Board, we have Avagdor Pemper, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson in the category Alternate, and Joel Slotnick, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And for consensus as well, for the Walk of Fame Induction Committee, we still have two vacant consensus seats open for that one.
Keep that in mind, folks. Walk of Fame vacancies.
And.
Can you, sorry, can you email those to us, just, and who we can choose from, because there's a finite list, right?
Yes, I have it. I'll send it to you.
If you could send that to us, thanks.
And then for the individual nominations, Dr. Pamela Beasley Pittman, that Cemetery Board, System Board of Trustees, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, Charter Revision Board, Judith Stern, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, and Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Roosevelt Walters, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, and Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gina Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And for tonight's resolution, we have Aviation Advisory Board, Dr. Ed Quoka, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Economic Development Advisory Board, Catherine Conig, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Education Advisory Board, Vicki Melis, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, and Erin Gall, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Sustainability Advisory Board, Whitney Dutton, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and Carolyn Mazza, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. And that rounds it out.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Second.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part hereof. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution's approved. Thank you all who have, who are committing themselves to participate in these boards and committees, and we thank you for your sacrifice and your appreciation of making Fort Lauderdale the great city that it is. R2, Resolutions Establishing the Audit Advisory Board as the Auditor Selection Committee and Appointing a Member of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale to Serve as Chairperson. John, you want to explain that a little bit to us?
Certainly, Mayor. So Florida Statute has said that we must have an auditor selection committee, and they're adding a requirement that one of the members of the governing body needs to sit on that committee. So we've always had the Audit Advisory Board, and they have not necessarily served as the Audit Selection Committee in the past. So this requirement is merely specifying who is going to be that body that selects the external auditors.
So, so the member of the City Commission who's going to serve as chairperson, would they have to attend every meeting of the Audit Advisory Board, or just in the meeting where they select the auditor?
Just the ones where they act as the selection committee. So all the other meetings, not that there are that many, of the Audit Advisory Board, the commission representative will not need to be there. So there should probably only be, and I think Susan and I talked about this, two, maybe three meetings. Is that correct, Susan?
Yep.
So, yeah, there'll only be, there'll only be a couple of meetings for the selection of the actual external auditor.
Okay. Someone like to volunteer for this? It's only one or two meetings to be the chair.
This is probably the most exciting one all year. It's right up there with solid waste.
And that's exactly why I get a pass on. In fact, I have a papal dispensation for any kind of appointments to any committees based on my service on the solid waste, county solid waste working group. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, would you be interested in this?
I serve on a lot of other committees. Thank you. Y'all send me all over the state.
I would recommend Commissioner McKenzie, but I'm not sure how, yeah.
I accept.
What's that?
I accept.
You accept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, great. So.
Moved.
So we moved to.
You're actually.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks.
Second. You're actually voting on two resolutions tonight. One committee, and then the other the selection.
Yes, you get, hey. Okay. So the first resolution is establishing the Audit Advisory Board as the Auditor Selection Committee. That's the first resolution. And that's the one that's been introduced by Commissioner Sorenson. So let's call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, designating the Audit Advisor Board as the Auditor Selection Committee pursuant to the Uniform Local Government Financial Management and Reporting Act and providing for the selection of a chair and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
I'll vote myself.
Yes, you can.
Yes.
We'll accept that conflict of interest.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And we have established the Audit Advisory Board as the Auditor Selection Committee. Now, we need a resolution appointing Commissioner McKenzie as a member of the City Commission to serve as chairperson.
Introduced.
Introduced.
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing Commissioner McKenzie as the Chair of the Auditor Selection Committee. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And thank you, Commissioner McKenzie.
You're quite welcome, Mayor.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for asking.
I have a few more I'd like to recommend. Okay. Resolution authorizing the reconveyance of the sidewalk right-of-way by quick claim deed pursuant to Florida Statute 255.22. This is on Northwest 7th Avenue and Northwest 4th Street. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? They're being known. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale pursuant to Florida Statute Section 255.22, authorizing reconveyance by quick claim deed to Sixth Street Corporation, a Florida corporation of a 10-foot sidewalk right-of-way easement and a 5-foot sidewalk right-of-way easement previously conveyed to the City of Fort Lauderdale, authorizing execution and delivery of the quick claim deed of reconveyance, repeal of any and all resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. R4, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Sovereignty Submerged Land Easement, a modification to increase the square footage with the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida. This is the Bill Keith Preserve Shoreline Stabilization. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing execution of a sovereignty submerged lands easement modification between the State of Florida Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund and the City of Fort Lauderdale for the Bill Keith Preserve for a 50-year period, authorizing execution thereof by the property city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Okay, R5, the resolution urging the Florida Department of Transportation to consider the tunnel as the future commuter rail service in the City of Fort Lauderdale. I think that needs to be better worded. It's the local preferred alternative, correct? If I'm not mistaken, Alan? That's the proper language.
We, I just emailed, because we've just started reviewing it, but I just emailed a version that has some minor revisions in it similar to what you've just stated for the record. They won't change the substance of the resolution, but it just cleans it up in some places. For example, the MPO is called an agency. It's really an organization. So little things like that.
So the, so F dot, the vocabulary, the phrase that they use is a local preferred alternative, right? That's the one that we have to choose.
We, we changed it to locally preferred alternative. I believe it's locally.
Locally, okay. Locally preferred alternative.
So we've made those changes.
So, so we have to choose one locally preferred alternative, correct?
Well, you're actually not, what you're doing is you're urging. So it's not, you're not really voting on any decision. You're just basically, this is a resolution that's urging them or suggesting to them what they should do. But you're not actually picking one. It doesn't have that rule of law.
Right. Okay. So, all right, so we heard a lot at our workshop today. Would someone like to introduce a resolution?
Mayor, I just have a question before we do that, if you don't mind. So I noticed that we did get it revised, and I noticed that the header is slightly different. And instead of objecting to something, we're recommending something, which I think is good because it's positive. But Alan, are there any other changes of substance like that in the rest of this resolution? I did not get a chance because we just got this.
We, we did not get a red line, so we'd have to read it word for word and compare the two, which we have not been able to do. I don't have a red line.
Well, are there any substantive changes from the first to the second?
We're still, I just received it at the same time as you all.
Well, who wrote this, then?
I believe your administrative assistant did.
That's what I saw on email, Scott Wyman.
Okay, so this is the one that, this is the one that we, that, okay.
Correct. I believe Mr. Wyman would suggest if you're going to look to somebody to introduce the resolution, that what be introduced is what was sent this afternoon as opposed to what was published on the agenda.
Okay, so the one that, the one that was, that was discussed this morning, then, was the, was the resolution that.
Not the one that I published. I published it because this item deferred from a previous agenda. So we published exactly the same thing that was on the prior agenda, but if you want to introduce a different resolution on the same topic, I just think we need to make that nuance on the record.
All right, so this says, "A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, urging the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for distribution, direction to the city's state lobbyists, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions and an effective date. Whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale is supportive of the regional initiative to develop commuter rail service during the FEC railroad tracks through Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties in an effort to reduce congestion on the South Florida roadways and improve mass transit." Will I agree on that?
Yes.
I don't think you have to read the whole thing.
Okay, I don't think there's much that.
Here's what I'd suggest, just as an idea. Introduce this pending minor adjustments by the city attorney.
Okay, Sue, would you like to introduce?
I'd like to introduce.
Can I just, well, can I ask a question after, before you introduce it? I just want to clarify, just for the record. This resolution urging this position, will this prohibit any other alternatives?
No.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, I think that's the important part of it. Yep, so I'll introduce it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to make sure that, I know it's a consensus, and a majority, it's all of the above.
It's good if it be.
I also just want the public to be, you know, aware that, how long this could take and, you know, and finding the funding sources is the key to the success of this happening. And so we encourage all, involve all that are listening to, you know, reach out where you can and encourage that we find funds for this. Because if we don't find the funds, this will, this will not happen. So I'm more than happy to support the tunnel at the New River. The tunnel at the New River.
Right. Okay. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, urging the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for distribution, direction to the city's state lobbyists, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate that. And let's hope we can get the best solution for our city. Moving on. Really? Now we're going to take up half the meeting for this?
See if he finds the money first.
You.
Hope not.
Do you find a 500?
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, would you like to start? You have any comments?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just, it's, I'm thankful to work with you, Chris. You do a great job. And I appreciate what you do for our city.
I want to check this out.
Thank you.
I was short. Go ahead.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you want to comment? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
As far as that, I'm not going to support the.
At least he didn't rush you this time.
Performance, I'm going to recommend that. No, I'm just kidding. I don't have any problems with what's on the table.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you. I also want to say thank you, Chris. It's a pleasure working with you. I always appreciate you getting back in a very prompt and efficient manner all the time. And I think, I think we've done some good work in the last, actually, it's been four years? Next month's, four months, March is four years, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks, Mayor. I think, Chris, you've done excellent job through some challenging times and appreciate your dedication and hard work with us and with team members. And I look forward to your continued, just excellent work around the city. Really makes a huge, huge difference. So thank you, thank you, for what you do. Mayor, I have a salary suggestion.
Don't I get to talk?
I'll, I'll talk after you. Please, go ahead.
Your salary suggestion.
You go ahead. I was going to suggest a 5% increase.
So what is your, what is your base now?
Oh goodness, I knew you were going to ask those kind of details. It's in the two, in the high 270.
Isn't it like 275 or something?
Because we gave him a good bump.
Right. I think we should give him a bump.
Brought forward on, just so I can be clear of what's on the agenda tonight. So I have not brought forward a resolution seeking anything.
I noticed it wasn't on.
Decide to do something like that, it'll have to come back at the next meeting. This was more just to evaluate where we were from a performance.
All right, so, all right, so this is just an evaluation. Okay. Yeah, I was looking for the resolution for that, and I didn't see it, so, okay. All right, so I echo the comments of everyone who has spoken tonight. But in addition, you know, it's, being mayor in a, in a strong, in a weak mayor position is often challenging because you don't quite know what your responsibilities are or your authority is. But working with Chris, it's been, it's been a great moment in time, I think, from, from my point of view, to be able to continue to work as mayor with this commission in accomplishing the types of things that we look to accomplish and to, and to feel comfortable that we work hand in hand and that we, you know, we may not always agree, but we certainly always find a way to get things done. And, you know, and I feel that, you know, you've been a tremendous asset to our city, even since before you became city manager, even when you were assistant city manager.
And in the mailroom before that.
In the mailroom before that. Hey, all great people start.
He and Hal were a great duo there.
And they had to split up.
They had to split up, I know. Hal, did you, you're not taking the chandeliers with you, are you? From our neighborhood support night? So really, Chris, thank you so much for all that you do. We continue to rely on your imagination and your initiatives that you take in so many different areas, helping to lead our city in so many ways. You know, you've helped put our city on the map nationally and internationally. And I think that has manifested itself in more and more investment that's happening in our, in our community, and we see it every day. And, and I think that's a testament to your leadership, to the cooperation that this commission has shown, and to this community that continues to understand the importance of, of making Fort Lauderdale the great city that it has continued to become. So I will, you know, fully support any increase in salary, and we appreciate your working with us in the years ahead.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So there's really nothing to vote on here, so.
There's not. No, this was just a presentation.
This is just, okay, all right.
Mayor, would that come back to us next meeting? Is that what?
At some point.
Yeah, yes, yeah, we can bring, we can bring a resolution forward that you can consider.
Okay.
That's not, that's not for tonight.
Yep, okay, great.
Okay. We have someone who wanted to speak on R6. Did you want to still speak, Jay? Yeah, come on up. A dissenter.
Yes.
Waiting for one.
A heckler in the crowd. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Jay Shackman, President of the Tarpin River Civic Association. I've been following the different increases that you have all been contemplating as of late. And I just wanted, you know, to bring to everyone's attention something that has crept up, which is inflation. We have had 6% or so annual inflation over the last 12 months. So in not, you know, increasing wages by that much, we're actually, wages are actually decreasing in their purchasing power. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It hasn't been, we haven't had this level of inflation in probably over 10 years. So people, you know, we feel it at the stores when we're making our purchases. But, you know, there's a real value to money that is lost if we don't increase wages to at least 6%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to PH1, this is a public hearing. It's a resolution granting a waiver of limitations at 721 Cordova Road for the installation of an L-shaped fixed dock, floating dock, and boat lift. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this? I was looking at this. It's just a 5-foot extension beyond the 25 feet. So it's a 30-foot, 30-foot dock. Is Andrew Cuba here? Andrew, want to come up?
Mayor, we're going to have periodic additional ones of these as we, as neighbors populate the docks.
Right.
Road that is fixed.
Right. So, hi, Andrew. Always the question, will this extension in any way impede navigation on the waterway next to this dock? Wait a minute.
Not, not at all.
Okay. And how wide is this area? 500 feet?
Over 500 feet.
Okay, all righty. Do you have any, anyone have any questions of Andrew? Okay, thank you. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
And that's, and that's approving, correct?
That's to approve.
To approve, yep.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of limitations of ULDR Section 47-19.3C to permit Edward J. Bone III and Elizabeth Ellen Bone, husband and wife, installation of an L-shaped fixed wood dock, a 20-foot by 5-foot floating dock, and a 30,000-pound cradle boat lift extending a maximum of plus or minus 30 feet from the wet face of the seawall into an adjacent Lake Juanita, such property being located at 721 Cordova Road, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33316, and more particular described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Moving on to PH2. This is a public hearing and a quasi-judicial resolution approving historic landmark designation of the property commonly known as the, quote, "New River Castle", end quote, located at 625 Southwest 5th Place, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Historic Preservation Board Case Number UDP-HPD21001. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Vice Mayor, do you have any additional disclosures to make?
When, the last time we gave our disclosures, when did we do that? I don't, I don't think so. I mean, email communications, maybe, but no more meetings with people.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
No additional.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
No additional.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Continued discussions with all parties.
Okay, so you may recall when we last discussed this and we deferred it to tonight, the commission charged me with a meeting with the owner of the property and his attorney to see if we could work out a, an amicable agreement with regard to the issue. And I, and I did meet with Mr. Cole and, and I don't think I met with, I don't think I met with you separately. We did meet. At the public meet, right. But I mean separately, we did not meet. No, just Mr. Cole and I did have a conversation. And at that meeting, we kind of had a handshake deal, which I understand now from your attorney's letter that you're looking to modify what I thought was, was an agreement. So would you like to come up and explain to the commission what exactly you're looking to accomplish tonight?
So Mayor, I just have a point of information. Are we reopening public comment now?
We actually closed it last time.
I know, but that's.
We said we wouldn't do that.
But I'm just, with speakers coming now, I'm just wondering how this works out.
I know.
I haven't recognized any speakers yet.
Okay.
We can talk about it, but normally, once we close public hearing, close public hearing.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
So anyone speaking now, so this is not considered public hearing? Only the parties would be entitled to do that, so that would be the applicant, which would be the trust, obviously, the property owners, made party, and the city. Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir, and Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you, everyone, for your time, and we greatly appreciate everyone being here. Regarding the situation, to put it plainly, without all the jargon around it, Mr. Cole does want to save the castle, but he doesn't want to be subject to the extraneous requirements that may come along. For example, what we discussed was designation of the structure only, which, under a traditional sense, would be somewhat agreeable, which is what we discussed. However, subsequently, a lot of information, which I did attach to the record and provide to the city clerk as an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B, essentially shows, plus the statements that were made, that the castle isn't an issue. The property is. And that concerns us because I've encountered a lot of different times whereby we have a structure, yet someone could say this new development affects its sense of place and therefore have it kicked into a board, which may look at things outside their purview, you know? And that was really what changed it. So Mr. Cole still has the intent to save it. In that letter, we also attached a site plan showing four units which meet the RD15 requirements. There is no rezoning, has, which has been previously put out there. There is no seven-story development, which is previously. There is no seven-story development, which is previously put out there. There is no taking of public land, that which was previously put out there. And I've been working all this time to dispute all of these facts. And Mr. Cole has been trying to work to come to a solution, and we thought we were there. But essentially, our concern is that if we do the structure only, then development of those four units, which we intend to move forward with, and keep the castle as a deeded accessory dwelling unit on one of those four units with it, and that property will travel with the land, and also he's willing to place a deed restriction on that property because it will only be one of the four, saying this castle can't be torn down. That was our thought, in that we still effectuate the plan and the intent for those who truly care about historic designation, that the structure will be maintained because Mr. Cole has been honest and forthright throughout this whole process. And that site plan shows he never had any intent to tear down that castle, which is pretty much the reason that the application, among others, as contained in the exhibits that I referenced previously, show why we're actually here for this application. So that was the change. Again, I don't believe the intent of it has changed. It's just the recently discovered information doesn't provide the level of certainty to where he will end this quagmire anytime soon.
Okay, so, when I met, so Greg, when I met with your client, Mr. Cole, we had come to an agreement, verbal agreement, that he would agree to the historic designation of the castle, as well as the land upon which it sits. Okay? So, with that, in trying, in trying to be consistent, which I know you're trying to be consistent, may I ask my city attorney, what is, for the, for the edification of the commission, and myself, what is, would be the difference to the city between the historic designation of the castle, building, and the land versus a deed restriction?
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that, although I, I have to note that it is a bit beyond what's before you tonight.
Right.
But, and I can get into that a little further into the weeds. There, there's numerous differences, obviously, when something is designated historical. There's a variety of parameters that have to be satisfied. There's a code they have to follow. The, the Historic Preservation Board has a role in that with regards to certificates of appropriateness, so on and so forth.
That's just for the building?
Correct, if, if that's all you designate, correct. The restrictive.
Covenant.
The covenant on the deed is, is only useful for the city and of any value to the city if the city is a beneficiary to that, because any restriction on the deed can be changed, right? So, if, if we are a beneficiary to that deed restriction, then they would need our approval to make any changes to that as well. Without that, I don't know that there's any value to it, except of course, the good faith that they would not do anything. But I, I don't operate on those principles from a legal standpoint. You have to have surety there for your client. So, just the deed restriction in and of itself, I don't think would really accomplish anything because it could be changed in the future, without the city's consent.
Okay, so, Mr. McElone, if, if you were to construct this deed restriction such that the city, as a beneficiary to this restriction, would have to be consulted before there'd be any change. I mean, is it six of one, half a dozen of the other? I mean, I'm just trying to, I mean, I, I think Mr. Cole's trying to do the right thing here. I think he was, he's just, you know, everyone gets a little scared when people say historic designation, so. But with the deed restriction, what would, like, for example, if you wanted to make modifications to the building, how would that be accomplished if it's a deed restriction?
It depends on the deed restriction. Because if the deed restriction only states that we're not going to demolish the building.
Right.
Then that's the only restriction, okay? There's nothing with regards, I don't have any specificity as to what those restrictions would be, or what the components of that deed restriction would be, in the sense of upkeep, does it include? There's a variety of things. Again, I have to, we have to be careful for the record because there've been threats of appeal, that the sole issue before you tonight is whether that building is historical or not. I know we're trying to practically arrive at the same place and then make everyone happy as much as possible, but the sole issue for you tonight is that determination. If there's competent substantial evidence on the record, and I can go through the three sections we need to deal with, that either make this property, the house itself, or both the site and the property, historical or not. And that's really the only issue, because when we get into alternatives, you really, although from a practical standpoint, a deed restriction would perhaps achieve restrictions, obviously, in what you can do in the castle house, it does not in any way, shape, or form replace historical designation. It's completely different.
Okay, so, Mr. McElone, did you, have you recommended what that deed would, would state in terms of it being a restrictive covenant?
And, and I understand, and, and I just want to just parse it out real quick because I understand the city attorney's position on it regarding those issues. Our position, and I just want to say this loud and clear, is this does not meet the criteria for historic designation.
Well.
No, 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 I know, I know, I just wanted to start with that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I just wanted to start with that.
Well, the thing is, we came to an agreement.
No, I know, I know, I, I understand, and a lot of that is by the person's intent. What we agreed is that there's a lot of people who vocalized an interest in it. That doesn't mean it's historic with it. We recognize that, we recognize that's holding up, moving forward with anything, and therefore, we were trying to work with it. In terms of making it in terms of a third party, I just spoke with the client, he has no issue. But again, then we're somewhat left just, and again, there's probably a greater level of assurance that it can't go that way. But, for example, if he wants to paint it white and change out the windows with it, and then we go before Historic Preservation Board, and the next thing you know, we're bringing the building height by five feet, we're moving it off the area where the greenway was, I could foresee all that happening. If there's enough of an assurance, I don't see that as much happening with a deed restriction in the event that, I agree, there could be a maintenance enforcement, and there could be a prevention from teardown, but if he's just going to change out a window, he's not going to be subject to his entire development being halted. And I think that's kind of the crux of what's being had right now. So, in terms of third-party enforcement, as long as it's legitimate and good faith, and everything is kosher, for lack of a better term, then he's got no issue. It's just, I think, what I'm having difficult with in the attorney is providing the level of comfort to our respective clients, and then getting to that level to where we're get there, to where the parties can move forward with the greatest compromise possible. And I, I think that's the crux of the issue at play.
Mayor.
You want to comment on that, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, I, I just have some questions for the attorney and so forth.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Can I start there, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. So, thanks, Greg. Alan, so give, remind us again, main criteria before us is whether or not the building and/or the land is historical in nature, right? Give us, give us the criteria again, what we should be doing.
Right, so you have three resolutions before you tonight, and, and let me go through the standards before I go through the resolutions. So, for simplicity's sake, this is all in Chapter 47-24, for simplicity's sake, I'll refer to it as C7A&amp;F, and then C8G, okay? It's a combination of those three, or potentially just one. So, you have to have competent substantial evidence that under C7A, that the property's value as a significant, is a significant reminder of the cultural or archaeological heritage of the city, state, or nation, or, under subsection F, its distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style valuable for the study of a period, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials. Now, there's a separate section that we spoke of last time, which is C8G. That only kicks in if you believe that the castle only became significant when the, within the last 50 years. So, if you don't think it became significant within the last 50 years, C8's out of it. You still have to find under C7A or F. Okay? Now, the resolutions you have before you, the Historical Preservation Board recommended only the structure itself. In our code, it comes to you with the structure and the site together, okay? You, would you, it would be you, the City Commission, that would decide whether it's the site and the house, or just the house. So, your first resolution is approving, but the building only. The second resolution is approving the castle and the entire site, and obviously, the third one would be denying the application as a whole. Those are the three options before you. But the criteria is important, and, and our historical expert obviously can speak to that more, more fully. If you have questions as to what justifies those particular parameters, but essentially, you'd have to find under A, either A, F, and G, A, and G, F, and G, or just A. So you have all the variety of particular, and again, Tricia could probably explain to you what can constitute those standards that I've just read. She'd be more appropriate for that. But you would have to have competent substantial evidence in finding that that structure, or the site and the structure, are deemed historical under that standard.
Right.
And that's really the only thing before you. It's very tempting to go on the other road about alternatives. With restrictive covenants, but that creates a record. If you decide not to, if you decide to vote no, that it's not historical based on the fact that there's an alternative which is going to do a restrictive covenant, you've got a bit of, me as your attorney, I'm concerned about the record because if they appeal something, or someone appeals something, your record now is now discussing restrictive covenants, and they're not, you're not talking about the historical aspect of this property. So we have to try to focus as much as possible on that.
Okay, so that, that's, yeah, that's one of the things that kind of concerns me a bit. It, is the standard for the building and the land the same? In other words, when you went through C7A&amp;F, it's the same, right?
They, they apply, yes, they would apply, right. And I believe the 50-year, and, and again, Tricia can speak to it, but the 50-year aspect, I think, only kicks in because of the coral, or the rock that's on the fascia of the building, which I still don't know whether it's been deemed coral or not, but I believe that's what kicks it in because that occurred within 50 years.
Okay.
But beyond that, I don't know, again, Tricia would have to speak to that.
Okay, great. So, Mayor, could I have Tr- ask Tricia to come up and, or?
I think she did give her presentation last night, but it's good to refresh our memories. Is also, is Michaela here? Where, oh, there you are, okay. Like, because you didn't sign up to speak, but because you are a party, you are the applicant. If you do want to speak tonight, you're entitled to speak, okay? I'm sorry, go ahead, Trish.
Oh, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thanks, Trish. And I guess my question again, just to kind of refresh our memories, or where you, your current analysis, under, following your expertise and guidance, is the building, is the land, is the building and the land historic? Your analysis.
So typically, with historic preservation, you would be designating the structure and the surrounding land. It's, it's more appropriate to do that because it's part of the overall location, and its significance, and its setting. So you'd want to preserve it as a whole, and have the Historic Preservation Board have the ability to weigh in on any changes that happen and occur to the property as a whole in the future to make sure that the historic aspects of the building itself are preserved in the best way possible.
But the Historic Preservation Board did not recommend that. They just recommended the build.
That's correct, yeah. So, they've recommended that it just be the structure be designated, and that is something that has occurred in the past, but it's not necessarily the most appropriate way to move forward.
Alright, but we don't want to contradict the board. Right?
What'd you say?
I mean, she, you.
In my staff report.
You're saying that we need to also, also need to designate the, the, the land around it. We're not defining what amount of land that is, number one, and number two, that's not what the HPV recommended. They just said just the building.
So, we received an application for historic designation, and that was for the, the building and the property surrounding it. Staff evaluated that application, and as I'm stating, taking into account its setting, the property's setting, is something that is recommended as part of the National Register bulletins and the guidance from the federal government. The Historic Preservation Board did make that recommendation to only designate the structure.
Right.
But staff isn't contradicting anyone, it's just.
Okay. But let me ask Trish, and also our city attorney, what's before us? The recommendation of the HPV, or the application itself, and the fact that we have to determine if there's competent substantial evidence?
It's the application, and what, you're essentially, the, the HPV is me, is merely advisory in this capacity. So, it's your decision. So, it's the, it's the application, not the recommendation.
Correct, thank you. And, and Chris, can Tr- can, can I ask her, can Tricia give us her opinion as to what should be designated or not?
She has provided a staff report, which I believe comes to some kind of conclusion, but certainly, yes, that would be part of competent substantial.
And it's okay if she contradicts a board, right? Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, as part of my staff report and the staff analysis, I did conclude that it was eligible for designation as applied for with the setting. It doesn't necessarily have to include the entire two lots that were applied for and as it sits on its property today, but part of its significance is related to its surrounding land and its location on the river, and next to the former bridge.
Okay.
So that's part of the overall history and historical context.
Okay, and remind me again, or others, that if, let's say, so, in terms of the land, there's a couple options, as you mentioned, there's, you could say the structure and the lot it sits on, you could say all, what is it? Is it, are there three lots there, two lots there? There are two, right?
Two lots.
Right, so you could say the structure and the lots, lot it sits on, you could say the structure and the two lots. Or you could say just the structure, I mean, there's a host of, of options here. What are the, the applicant mentioned, the development being halted? What are the implications of designating land historic? What does that mean tactically, if you want to build things?
As far as the review process?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, if the property itself overall is designated, anything that is proposed to be constructed in addition on that property would most likely go in front of the Historic Preservation Board because of the visibility of that new construction. If someone would want to remodel their kitchen, and it's on the interior, it's not affecting the exterior, that's something that historic preservation doesn't control. But if they would like to replace a window or a door, then that's something that they can apply for a building permit application, and if it's appropriate historically, or it's matching the existing style, it's something staff can improve administratively as part of the building permit application process. And it doesn't have to go before the Historic Preservation Board. But if there's an alteration of some sort, that, you know, they have a wooden door, but they'd like a French, a glass French door, then they may have to go in front of the Historic Preservation Board for consideration of that alteration on the actual historic structure, not any new construction around it necessarily.
Okay, and if they wanted to build a new building near, on this designated land, you're saying they would have to come in front of the Historic Preservation Board?
Yeah, if it's, if the land itself is designated, they would have to go to the Historic Preservation Board for a certificate of appropriateness for new construction.
Okay, and is there any, or I don't know who I would ask for this, I'm just trying to understand, any kind of, so, that would be up to the Historic Preservation Board to make a determination on that? And then just procedurally, does that, can that then come to the commission, or how does, what's that?
For certificates of appropriateness, they, they're issued or not issued, and they can appeal to the City Commission.
Okay, alright. Okay, great, thanks.
So, your point, and, and Trish, help me out here. So, normally, in the Sailboat Bend district, I know this is not Sailboat Bend, but normally, in the Sailboat Bend district, when someone wants to apply for a certificate of appropriateness to make a renovation, like to a window or a door, or, or siding, or some aspect of the external structure, there's a vernacular, there's some, like, something else like it in the area that you model it after to make sure it's consistent with the historic preservation aspect of it. What would be the comparison here, that if, if Mr. Cole wanted to change a window? Like, what, what other castle would he, you know, compare it to? What other historic structure would there be to define what was appropriate and not appropriate?
So in that case, and then, in Sailboat Bend, what we would look at is structure by structure.
Right.
Sometimes there are double or triple of the same type of structure, or it's of a certain style. So we do have style books and style guides as far as what we would look to. In this particular case, to make a determination, and we can't determine what the original window type is, we can also look at what the existing window is, and make, make a determination of what might be the most appropriate style of window for the replacement.
So what's standard, though? What's appropriate for castles? You know, I mean, and I'm not trying to be facetious, but I'm just, like, if he, let's say he wants to replace the window and make it hurricane, you know, impact resistant, and they don't have the same style anymore in the impact resistant, you know, inventory, what does he? what is he to do?
So in some cases, uh, there may be fixed windows and, and some of the openings, I do believe that they're, uh, rather small, so they may have to be a custom window anyway, but, um, just, it's going to go by opening and determine what is in that opening today. If we can make a determination, if that's the original window style, if it's a single hung window, it can be replaced with a single hung window of the same size. If it's a fixed window, it can be replaced with a fixed window. I don't know, um, you know, it just, it's always a conversation with an applicant if they would like to do something different than what's there existing or what we have documentation for that was there historically, as far as what's most appropriate and what their needs are and what their request is. And ultimately, in some cases, we do have to go in front of the Historic Preservation Board to, um, to request a certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. Commissioner, do you want to, you have any other questions, Commissioner? Sorry, I answered.
I'm good for right now.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Trish. Um, a question, because I just noticed something when Alan was reading the criteria that we had to look at, and I think maybe there's a mistake in the staff report on page six of seven, because F is reading the same as A.
Correct, yeah, that was corrected on the record at the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay, what is, what is F exactly? So I could just change that on my-
Sure, F is, it's distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style valuable for the study of a period method of construction or use of indigenous materials.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, next question, because we've been discussing the land and whether the land should be designated or not. So help me understand, um, this actually is in an archaeological zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I, I think I've got this right, but if, if the site plan that we had been presented with, um, even though we're not considering that now, it's townhomes and more than one single-family home, that would have to go under an archaeological review of the site, correct?
If something is applied for, for, um, a new development and it has to go to the Development Review Committee for consideration, then it would need archaeological review.
So this would need archaeological review on this site regardless of whether it had a designation of the land with the castle or just the castle?
It depends on the application type.
If it's a multifamily, if it's four townhomes, like-
If it goes through, if it, if the development that's proposed in the future, if it's, uh, if it qualifies for a DRC application, if it needs to go in front of the DRC, then it also gets archaeological review.
So with archae-
Single-family home?
No.
You would never see it.
Correct. With archaeological review, then does the Historic Preservation Board have any input into that or say or comment and review or anything?
Not usually.
Okay. So who conducts that archaeological review for DRC?
So we have an archaeological consultant for the city, and he does an initial overview and review of the parcel and makes a recommendation to the city as far as what we should be asking the applicant for, whether that be testing or, um, a phase one survey, or if simply it would just be monitoring of the site while digging is occurring. Um, so there's a range of options that might be proposed depending on what we know about the site already and what disturbances have occurred there up into this time.
Right. And in your research, when I read through the staff report, um, has there been much on this site in, in all these years in our history? Has there really been any development on this site or, I mean-
Not a modern development, I know.
Nothing, right? Excuse me?
I mean, there are houses already in the-
No, on these two lots.
Oh.
Correct, on these two lots.
These two lots are pretty much undisturbed in a hundred years.
Jack, so is any other property on the river there as well.
Okay, Mr. McAlune, please, I give you a chance to respond, but don't jump up like that.
Yeah, just scared me a little bit, I was just, okay. I was looking for Judge Judy. Uh, Trish, so basically, though, in your research of these two lots, un, undeveloped in all these years, so, um, and we know it's in an archaeological zone, so chances are it would have to go through a review and a dig, uh, on the site.
Yes, usually when we don't have, um, information concerning, we don't have a previous development and hasn't been disturbed in the past, most likely we start with, uh, initial testing on the site, just to get an idea of the soil compositions, and then most likely we'd move into a phase one archaeological survey.
And then what happens if, let's just say, artifacts are discovered on this site? Then what happens to the site plan and the construction?
Uh, it depends on what is discovered. If it's, um, simply artifacts just relating to the cultural heritage of the site, um, usually there's some sort of mitigation plan that is agreed upon and drafted by the archaeologists, and then if we do find human remains, then we do, under federal and state statute, have to, um, stop construction and, uh, have an investigation.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, I should have started from this end. Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
I, I do not.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie, do you want to add to this conversation? Okay. So, um, uh, Michaela, you didn't sign up to speak, but do you have-
That's Su- that's Susan Gillis.
I can't see it, I don't have my glasses.
I'm sorry, Michaela.
Oh, Su- oh, okay. I, oh, there you are, okay. Thank you. Uh, but are you not the applicant, though?
Uh, I'm representing Michaela. She is unavoidably detained.
She's on what?
She has an emergency. She's trapped in Key Largo. So she asked me to speak on her behalf.
Alan, is that permissible? I don't-
Are you part of the trust?
I am.
Are you, you are part of the-
I don't want to stretch the bounds.
Yeah, I know. Are you, are you part of the Broward Trust for Historic Preservation?
I am.
She's a board member? And the applicant is a Broward Trust?
If, if there's no objection to it, then-
I just ask that she be a board member to be able to speak, that's all.
Right, is she a board member?
I am not currently a board member.
You're not? Okay. All right, sorry.
Really?
Yeah, sorry, I tried. Okay, so, um, the thing is, I think the goal here is to try to make sure that the, the castle is not torn down. I think that's, that's, um, step one. And I think that there is, uh, agreement between, uh, between the parties that the castle will not be torn down, and I think we're good there, okay? Question is, how do we get there? How do we get there to make that a condition in perpetuity and so that we can have a, a, um, a enforcement mechanism that, uh, that has, uh, you know, real powers to make sure that that doesn't happen? The second thing is, um, it needs a little tidying up, there's no doubt about that, and we don't want to tie the person's hands, uh, Mr. Cole's hands in trying to clean it up, paint it, uh, I don't know about the windows or the doors, I, I mean, I, I did look at the thing, it's a little, it's a little, you know, um, threadbare, uh, and could use some help. Um, you know, those doors, you're not going to find anywhere unless you have them specially made, which could be very expensive. So, um, I think that the basic goal here is to, is to keep the, the, the structure intact. So how do we get there? So Mr., uh, back, back to you, Mr. Wallo. You're saying that we can get there through the, through the, to adopting the recommendation from the, uh, the Historic Preservation Board, right? We can save, we can save the castle by adopting the Historic Preservation Board's recommendation?
You can designate the, the building, uh, historical, you can designate the building and the land historical, or you can obviously deny.
You've got three choices, basically.
Right, right. Well, the land, that's always the land, like, how much of the land? Like, five feet around it, is a perimeter?
Uh, I'd have to defer to, um, to staff. My understanding is that it's only the one parcel that it's on that's been, that's part of the application.
That's a whole building lot.
Right. There's two part, I think it's what, 11 and 12? I think the app, it would be guided by the application, uh, and I, I don't have the application. It's right here, but I don't-
The application included both lots.
Oh, it did, okay.
Yeah, I, I personally can't go there. So, um, I want to see the fellow, you know, be able to build his homes on those properties. There's nothing, if he builds four homes, there's nothing, nothing that he's going to do that's interfere with the preservation of the castle. I, I mean, it's just, um, you know, if he digs up remnants of, you know, uh, an ancient settlement there, we'll deal with that when the time comes, that's, that's a whole other level that, uh, has to be dealt with. Because as you said, Commissioner, there's a, there's another level of review that, that's overarching the entire area. So, um, so, you know, I, I personally think that there, you know, in order to, I, I hate tying people's hands when it comes to trying to improve property, and I think sometimes the Historic Preservation Ordinance does that, and it dissuades people from, from investing in their properties to make them look nice. Uh, we've seen a lot of, of, you know, um, demolition by neglect, which, uh, continues to plague our community, especially in the Sailboat Bend area, because people do not want to invest in their property because their hands are tied to try to make those improvements. So, um, we've seen that, I, I've been on this commission a dozen years and I've seen it happen a time and again, and it's really sad, and they end up just tearing off the whole building down, and that's not good. So, you know, if we can come up with language that, um, from a restrictive covenant perspective, but if, in the, in that restrictive covenant, in the deed, that we can delineate what the terms, Mr. McAlune, of that restrictive covenant are going to be, I'd be more, I personally would be more comfortable, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I would, um, but I would personally be more comfortable because we're still accomplishing the same thing, which is keeping the castle. To me, that's, that's a given. So, um, and I think your client agrees with that. So, you know, to prevent him from building a house on there, it makes no sense because the castle is at the, is at the very corner of the property. Why encumber the entire property? It's a beautiful waterfront site, he's going to build four, you know, great, um, homes there, um, and I think it will enhance the whole neighborhood, should he have the ability to do that. So, um-
Mayor, I don't think designating the land encumbers it dramatically. What we're hearing is you can still develop on it.
Right.
You can still build on it, and it protects the, the castle. So I mean, it-
You can still build on it, but he had, but again, you know, what I don't understand is, if, if, if you, if you designate the, the whole lot, okay?
Right.
Uh, as historic.
Yes, yeah.
And I don't know why we would do that, but let's say you designate the whole lot as historic. What, what would be, what would he have to promise in terms of the new, a new home that he's going to build? What would, it's not like Sailboat Bend where there's a, there's, there's, you know, certain design vernacular within that area. There's no design vernacular in, in Tarpon Bend.
Right, which I think is great because it gives him this added flexibility to-
Total latitude.
Total latitude, and that if the Historic Preservation Board, um, rules against him, then he can appeal to the commission, and he can come to the commission.
What would, well, all right, so let's say you're, you and I are on the Historic Preservation Board, he presents, you know, a contemporary house.
Yeah, right.
So what, how could the Historic Preservation Board deny him?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a good question, so I think-
It would, they could.
They would deny him?
They could.
I, I don't think that's, I don't think-
They could, but I think they're going to be very reasonable.
Yeah.
I think they're really, and if they're not reasonable, then Mr. Cole can appeal to us, and I think we're going to be very reasonable around, in, in supporting development on, on that parcel that's reasonable.
I, I just, I, I just don't know what we're accomplishing by doing that, other than to create another level of headache for someone that bought this-
Mayor, what we're, Mayor, what we're accomplishing is we're following our process. We are a certified local government, we have a responsibility and an obligation as a certified local government to follow our ordinance. Trish has already explained what our ordinance is, she's explained that typically what you do is, again, everything that you try to do, I appreciate, that's great, didn't work out.
Yeah, but wait, you're saying follow our ordinance, but the ordinance, we're creating the ordinance. If there's no ordinance to follow here, we're making the ordinance.
No, 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 I'm talking about the ordinance that dictates to us the process. This already went to HPP, there's an application, and as the city attorney said to us this evening, all that's in front of us is this application. Do we feel that there is competent substantial evidence in this application to designate what was requested in the application and what Trish's staff has supported, which is designating the castle and designating the two lots?
That's not what the rec, back up, that's not what the recommendation was. If you want to follow process-
No, 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 no.
Follow the process, don't start dictating and then change the rule.
No, you did not listen to the city attorney. The city attorney said it's not the recommendation of the HPP that's before us, it is the application that is before us.
So would you want to deny the, the decision of HPP?
No, I don't, I didn't say that, but this commission has done that in the past.
But that, that's essentially what you'd be doing.
No, I would actually probably be agreeing with them with the castle, but I would probably also go a step further. I would be willing to not do the two, the two lots, but I would certainly recommend that we do the lot, um, upon which the castle sits. But when I say follow the process, I'm saying following the process that's laid out in our ordinance, that's our responsibility. Our responsibility is not to deviate from that process because then, then we're setting an awful precedent going forward. We might as well just chuck the whole process, we might as well say we don't want the federal status of a certified local government, we might as well just get rid of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, get rid of the Historic Preservation Board, because-
Don't get, don't get-
No, 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 I'm very serious, because-
That's not, that's not what's-
You're, you're, you're attempting to deviate way, way too far from what our process is, and I think that, that's going to set a bad precedent. So, I mean, we can have that discussion, I'm hoping that we get into, I mean, I'd like to say why I support the application.
We'll go right ahead.
Okay, well, thank you. So what we're charged with is deciding whether there's competent substantial evidence in front of us in front of the application. Um, so just very quickly, we know that this castle and the land is in the Florida Master Site File as early as 1985. It was then documented again in 1995 and again in 2020, uh, as part of the Architectural Resource Survey of Tarpon River. Um, if you go back, uh, records from at least over 20 years ago say that the structure is also eligible for individual listing at the local level, and the state has also said that this castle is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places that was decided in 2020. Um, it's obviously along the banks of the New River, it's an archaeological significant zone with multiple archaeological sites identified throughout that area. Uh, in terms of this report on the staff, um, I agree with Trish, I agree with Steph, and I agree with, uh, the concurring of the, concurrence of the Historic Preservation Board in terms of, uh, criteria A and F that basically deal with the significant reminder of the cultural or archaeological heritage of the city, state, or nation, and then also the distinguishing characteristics of the structure. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with those two. So when I look at the application, when I look, and I watched the entire Historic Preservation Board meeting, uh, and when I read the staff report, I really believe that what's in front of us is, again, deciding whether there is substantial competent evidence, and I think there is. Uh, and I think that we get into trouble, uh, if we deviate from either saying yes or no on that, and nothing else, really. What you're attempting to do with the deed restriction, I don't think that's going to work, I don't think the city attorney thinks it's going to work, uh, and I don't think then that you're going to find yourself in a situation in the future when everyone's going to come to you and say, hey, please don't give us historic designation, let's just have a deed restriction, or let's just do something different. I just think it's, I just think it's, uh, thin ice that we would be walking on, that's all.
Well, do you, do you feel it's necess, in order to preserve the castle, which is what this was all about originally, do you feel it's necessary to throw in the land to preserve the castle?
So here, could I take that?
All right.
So here's why I think the land matters, Mayor, is just the location of the land, not only kind of early Fort Lauderdale, you know, the bridge and so forth that was there, but also even going farther back. So I think it warrants, uh, just a little bit heightened level of review. Again, I think that heightened level of review is not going to, uh, negate further, further development on the site. I think that's going to be very possible. It just gives us one additive kind of look and evaluation, and that ultimately we as a commission can make determination if Mr. Cole's, uh, application is denied for development on that, on that, on that, that one parcel. if Mr. Cole's application is denied for development on that, on that, on that, that one parcel. And then we can be the reasonable ones if we feel others were not being reasonable.
Okay, so, so, so this is, this is how I see it.
Yeah.
If a motion is made to, to approve the applicant's request to designate the castle and the lot as historic based on this commission's determination that there was reasonable competent evidence upon which to base that decision, and the motion loses, okay? Then what incentive does Mr. Cole have to then agree with the city to do a restrictive covenant to accomplish what we're looking to accomplish? The answer to that is zero.
Well, no, then you could have another motion to just do the castle or just the one plot. Right now, the application is two plots.
Wait, we just determined that, that it, that the application, that the application did not provide substantial competent evidence for the castle and the land.
All the land, the two, the two lots. We're saying the, the lot it sits on. It sits, there are two, that piece of property is divided into two lots.
Right, I get that.
Yeah, so we're saying.
Mr. Ballow, could you, can you explain to me?
So you, you have three resolutions, so they're not motions. So you have three resolutions. So one, one of you would have to introduce whichever three of the resolutions you're proposing. If one resolution fails, nothing prevents another commissioner, the same commissioner, to introduce the other ones, obviously, if they.
But does that?
There's got to be, there has to be a decision.
But does that prejudice the basis upon which, if the first resolution is including the land and is denied, does that prejudice the basis upon which a second resolution would be introduced regarding just the castle?
Not necessarily, because you all could possibly disagree on the historical significance of the entire lot itself versus just the house.
Okay.
If you, I don't want to guide your actions, but if you find, like even if the, the resolution introducing the house only would be voted down, it may be because a commissioner wants to also include the whole site and not just the property.
Okay, I just don't want to box the city's position in.
That's one of the three choices, am I correct?
Say that again?
From the beginning, you said there's three choices.
Correct.
A, B, and C.
Right. So I think.
Pick A, B, or C.
Right, but I'm saying, but I'm saying if we pick their A and we turn it down, I just want to know what are the city's options to go to?
A is the castle.
A is done.
Castle and land.
We lose no options.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
And C is something else.
All options are still on the table.
Right, and as long as you're clear.
Hold on a second. Can you restate in order the options?
You have three resolutions before you. The first is designating and, and essentially following the recommendation of the H P B board and just designating the house as historical. The second resolution allows you to, or proposes to designate the house and the lots as applied to, so that would be both. So you'd have to distinguish whether it's just one or two.
Correct.
The third would be denying the historical designation for either.
Completely, okay.
Completely.
Could there be, could there be a fourth? Could there be castle and two lots and then perhaps castle and one lot? Two that it sits on?
No, you, you have, I think we just amend the second one that does the lot and just differentiate which lots you're really talking about. I think we could fix that in the second one. I just do want to be clear though, just to the mayor's point, that when we do decide on any particular resolution, that we're clear on the record. Because there is, and I'll just note this again for the record, Trish's recommendation, I believe, is historical designation based on the fact that it was historical within the last 50 years. The application, again, my understanding is that the applicant believes that it was, it became historical prior to the 50 years. So if we can be clear on that, because if it's within the 50 years, A G applies and then that's in the record. If you're designating it because of prior to 50 years, then obviously we're dealing with other components. So we just, we need to be clear as to why we're designating it as historical.
Okay. All right, so someone, hold on.
Okay, so.
The district commissioners tell us.
This is, this is a resolution, okay?
Couple, couple of questions. So one, let's just identify the two parcels that comprise this property. So there's two parcels. I think one is called Lot 11 and 12.
11 and 12, the house is on 12.
11 and 12, okay. So Lot 12 is the lot that the San Castle is on.
Yes. I don't think it's a sand castle though.
It's not a sand. That's a beach, a sand.
I say sand, the castle, sorry.
Good rainstorm with it.
It's not that small.
Not that small.
Not that small.
Well, thank you, thank you for the correction. Okay. Lot 12 is where the castle is on.
Do we have a site plan here? Do we have a, I mean, a lot plan?
The next question I'd have, Alan, is different, if, if, walk us through again the 50-year piece, which in.
Right, so that, you first have to satisfy A or F, although the property owner disputes that, but you have to either A or F. So its value is as a significant reminder of the cultural or archaeological heritage of the city, state, or nation, or its distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style valuable for the study of the period, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials.
Why is it or? Can it be both?
It can be both, but you only need one.
Correct, but it can be both.
Yeah, so if I say and though, that means that you have to have both. That's why you're thinking or. And then A G comes into play.
A G?
Eight, it's C eight G.
Yep.
Eight.
Eight.
Yep.
Did I say? Oh, okay, A G. That comes into play if you find that the historical significance is within the last 50 years. And I believe, again, Trish's point on that was because of the coral rock on the fascia of the castle. But she can correct me if I'm wrong.
And what does A G exactly say?
A G, I will read.
Property achieving significance within the past 50 years if it is of exceptional importance.
Thank you.
Correct.
Like the library was.
And so for clarity, maybe this is a question for you, Alan, or Trish, I'm not sure. But to me, uh, so I guess eight, I'm going to start with A G, but A G could apply to a structure and/or land. Is that correct?
It could. I don't know what's been identified in the land, but yes, it could.
Okay. Eight, or sorry, nope, going back to 30, or C seven A, its value as a significant reminder of cultural archaeological heritage of the city, state, or nation. That to me means that that could apply to a structure and/or land. Is that right?
I believe so, but that may be more of a Trish question.
Okay, Trish, do you want to make sure I'm clarifying? And then C seven F, to me, it distinguishes, its distinguishing characteristics of an architectural, archi, architectural style seems to me to only apply to a structure, not land. Is that, am I saying this all right?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, in.
Commissioner, I'm sorry to just interrupt, but I want to, if you look at her staff report for A, she does focus mostly on the land and the history of the site as opposed to the structure.
Yep.
In her report.
Okay, yep.
It's all about, it's all about the early settlement and the growth and, and the Tequesta and the Seminoles and the Mesopotamian action and all that.
Okay, good. And so does that, just so I'm clear, Commissioner and Trisha, is, does C seven A address the structure and the land in your estimation?
It's related, yes.
Okay. And Alan, you're saying we can only use one of those?
No, you can use both.
We can use both.
But you have to have at least one.
You have to have at least one, okay. So we can use both, okay, great. So that, that makes that easy. Okay. Excellent. So then could I introduce?
So I need someone to introduce a resolution and just define which, what you're resolving.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce resolution, mayor, to deem the structure and Lot 12 of the property in discussion to be designated historical due to meeting the criteria defined in C seven A and F as well as C eight G.
And that would be exhibit eight, the resolution at exhibit eight, and that would be as amended since that one includes both lots?
As amended for only Lot 12.
We don't need a second.
You don't need a second.
I withdraw the second.
And Alan, I'm reading the second one, correct?
Exhibit eight, right, it's on, it's on there as exhibit eight, as amended.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, designating the property commonly known as New River Castle, located at 625 Southwest Fifth Place, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as a historical landmark pursuant to section 47 dash 24.11 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, providing for severability, provide, and providing for an effective date.
So just to be clear, this is the building and the land, right?
Not all the land.
Lot 12.
Lot 12.
Just half the land.
Lot 12.
Half the land.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
No.
Mayor Trent House?
No. So let's try this again.
All right, so like to introduce the historical designation of the castle structure.
That'll be exhibit seven?
Exhibit, yeah, is that right?
Correct.
Exhibit seven, the castle structure for historical designation as a result of meeting the criteria expressed in.
Section two of the resolution?
Yeah, I'll just pause, mayor, there. We, we good?
Is there breaking news? Oh, okay.
Okay. C seven A and F and C.
A G.
A G, C.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, that, so this is just the castle?
Just the structure.
Just the structure, but not even the land under the structure, like the mayor had already worked out in his original deal? That didn't work out?
Uh, I don't, can we do?
Were you able to do just the land under the, like you worked out?
Mr. McElhoun?
As mentioned previously, we don't believe it meets the criteria and I think this discussion further evidences that.
We have two choices left, right?
Right, I mean, that was, that was what we had agreed to when we met privately with the, with the land on it that it sits on. I don't see how that would necessarily negatively impact the rest of the site, so. We should be, we should be good with that.
So what are we introducing?
So he's just introducing, are you introducing the structure and the dirt on which it sits?
Sure, I'm happy to introduce the.
Okay.
No, what, what were you introducing? I just want to understand.
Land, I introduced the structure.
And the land upon which it sits.
No, that's not what he said.
No, but I'm saying.
I'm happy to amend it.
Do you want to?
No, no, I'm not trying, I'm trying to understand what was it you introduced?
Yeah, okay. Structure.
So, so are you, is that, is that including the land on which it sits?
Sure.
So, hold on, does that include the land upon which it sits?
It does.
Thank you.
Yes.
And to be clear, the land, I know what you mean, but to be clear for the record, the land upon which it sits is not the parcel. It's just the actual dirt under the actual.
Correct, that's defined by the boundary of the building. Please call the roll.
So this is as amended as well?
Trish has something to say, I'd like to hear what she has.
Yes, Trish.
Sorry, we do have a legal description included as part of that resolution, so it does describe the prop, the property with a slight buffer around the structure.
All right, so we'll have to get, we'll have to get a surveyor to give us the actual legal. But for purposes of this resolution, I think it's defined as the land upon which it sits, which is bounded by the, the walls of the castle.
Okay.
And the moat, no, no, no.
So a seven as amended?
Seven as amended, okay. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, designate the building commonly known as the New River Castle, located at 625 Southwest Fifth Place, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as a historic landmark pursuant to section 47 dash 24.11 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
No.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes. So that resolution's approved and the castle is now has designated historic. Thank you, everybody. O F R one, first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Central Beach Zoning Districts to revise the process and procedures for uses in the Central Beach Zoning Districts, revise and adopt dimensional requirements, including open space and streetscape design requirements, and adopt prescriptive criteria for the design and compatibility point system. This is requesting a deferment to February 15th. Do I hear motion to defer?
Moved second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and this item's deferred to February 15th. Ordinance of second reading, this is an ordinance amending Division two, Administration and Enforcement of Article four of the chapter 26 to revise the administrative appeal process for parking citations and defective parking meters. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none?
Hey, does this?
What?
There was a email that came in talking about, I know it's two separate issues, but it came in talking about the fees we were charging for parking.
The parking pass?
Yeah.
I think the, the commission had voted on that last year and only now.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to.
Yeah, but he brought it up when this came.
It's nothing, I don't think it has anything to do with this.
Yeah, but he brought it up, I'm just trying to get a clarification.
Yeah, but I.
I think that, that communication came in earlier today and I think we have it handled. It was related to the price of the beach resident parking detail for a year because we now have added the Los Olas Oceanside Garage to that permit. So if you refer back to that memo, that's where we went from like $26 to 75. We had somebody that got caught in limbo today who had made application when, when it was $26 permit and then we charged 75 because of when it issued. So we'll work through that one, but I think that's the communication you're talking about that we saw earlier today.
When you say work through it, because I want clarification on that. When you say work through, what, what does that mean?
That means that if the application was in prior to us increasing the cost, we went back and we'll honor the price that was during the application.
Seventy-six dollars.
Seventy-five.
Jesus Christ.
Now, the parking pass intends you to free parking or reduce parking?
No, this is a pass for the entirety of a year for beach resident. Yes, and the reason the cost went up is because we heard you all indicate that, at least we thought this was the correct thing to do, to add the Las Olas, Las Olas Oceanside Garage.
But does this give you?
As an eligible place to park.
Does this give you reduced price?
Yeah, you do not, you do not pay when you come down there with the permit for the balance of the year.
Okay, so $75 to park for free on the beach.[1593.38]
If you're a beach resident, if you're just a city resident, it's more.
It's a resident, it's a resident.
You said beach resident.
Okay, so
He meant to say resident.
Interchange that with resident.
No, but this is important when I'm trying to
Oh, it is, I know.
So it's for all residents to have a pass, it's seventy-six dollars.
There's criteria by which you can demonstrate that you're a resident, and that's what entitles you to.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, because he brought it up on this particular item, so I just wanted to make sure we answer his question and we can move forward with this item.
We are also looking into whether a second homeowner could also buy that pass, if we make that decision.
And a different path, but yes, we're looking at that too, Ben's group is working on that now.
And so when I was looking at that email that was sent to us today, I did pull up the map, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ben or Chris, is there any parking in District 1 that someone could park, where someone could park?
We've got a parking
I don't, when I looked at that, I didn't see any, I thought we had a parking garage
North Beach Village.
Just south of Oakland Park, that's
There's that garage there by Shooter
Not District 1, but it's at least closer.
It's close to Sapphire.
It is close, it's still, I don't think there's any District 1 parking, so if I were a City of Fort Lauderdale resident, I bought this pass, I couldn't park anywhere in District 1.
That's correct, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility, good evening. The residential beach permit does not go up into District 1, it is the meters, North Sunrise, the beach park parking lot, which is all the way to the South Park, down by the Beheemar, and now the now the Los Olas Garage.
Okay.
So about that community center right there?
No.
Beach Community Center, that, do we own the parking garage just south of Oakland Park?
Not the garage, but the parking lot at the community center, that's, we enforce those meters, right?
Correct, so the meters by the community center are city-owned and operated, and the permit is not valid in those areas, there is a neighborhood permit that's good for that area. As for the garage, the garage is privately owned, the city does perform some services of management duties for that garage, but we don't set the rates where the permits are accepted in that facility.
Only on property that we own.
Our permits could be in properties that we own, correct?
Well, no one's complaining yet, but I just saw that, and I was, I know. I'm not saying that again, they're all gone, we pushed them to District 2.
No, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting emails about the huge increase.
Yeah, they're gone.
Triple.
Gone, gone next, gone the next day.
Fees.
Oh, the fees.
Parking fees.
No one's complaining in my district, because we don't have anywhere to park.
Okay, alright, any further questions, if none, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Division 2 Administration and Enforcement of Article 4 entitled Parking, Stopping and Standing of Chapter 26, entitled Traffic and Parking of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to revise the parking citation administrative appeal process and to add a citation administrative appeal process related to defective parking meters and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading. When we adjourn this meeting, we'll reconvene the conference meeting, is there any further business of this commission? Sorry, stick around, okay, nothing, this meeting is adjourned, we'll now reconvene the conference meeting, and we're going to go right into commission reports, Vice Mayor?
None.
None, woo! Is there something on TV tonight?
I mean, that's what the rest of you all will say.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any commission?
Well, I have several items I want to go over this evening in reference to my report, but I will defer into the next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, I will defer all of the events that I was going to announce, but I just wanted to say good luck to all of them this weekend, you know who you are.
That really hurt, didn't it?
I'm sorry, no, there's some really nice ones, especially on the beach, you got the Sea Glass and the Venice Magazine this weekend, you got Art Sir's got a great, I got what it's called already, it's very, I'm sorry, sui generis, anyway, but I had two points I wanted to make for John, John, please, do we have an update on the Ernst &amp; Young analysis on Beheemar? How's that coming?
It's supposed to be the first week of February.
We're still working on getting the scope of work finalized.
Oh, so we don't even have a scope of work?
We have a scope of work from them, it is currently with the Attorney's Office for review, and hopefully we will be able to move it forward. I know there are some questions about whether the current scope of work is permissible under the master agreement, or if we have to bring the master agreement back to the commission for approval to incorporate this, so that's, again, something that the Attorney's Office is reviewing currently.
So can we
What did you ask about?
I asked about, well, we agreed that Ernst &amp; Young was going to do a financial analysis for Beheemar,
Financial analysis?
But we haven't even yet determined the scope of that.
No, we haven't, but, okay, but I always thought you were asking about the appraisal, I'm sorry.
No.
No, that's different.
So, so just to be clear, though, we do have a scope of work from them, and again, that was the same team that was here this afternoon, so they're the same folks who'll be doing it, so we have the scope of work in hand. I believe it encompasses everything that we want to do, it's very comprehensive, but it needs to be consistent with the master agreement that we have in place. If it's not, we may need to modify the master agreement.
And is that the same exact team that's also doing the analysis for One Stop Shop?
That is correct.
How's that coming?
So they were provided with a second set of updates from the applicant last week, they'll be reviewing those.
Okay, hopefully two sets will be the end. And Chris, I'm still getting a lot of complaints about Southwest Second Street, and so many of the businesses are starting to suffer there near the railroad tracks. What's happening with the repairs there, it seems like it's just been forever.
We turn to Alan Dodd for an update there, I know we got an agreement finally, agreement finally agreed to with the contractor that's doing the work, and I believe mobilization should be occurring soon.
Yeah, Alan Dodd, Public Works Director, we did reach agreement, the change orders, there's two of them, are with the procurement officer, who I understand will be signing them tonight, once we do that, we'll bring it to Christopher's signature and get a schedule from the contractor on how quickly they can mobilize to at least get the road open, knowing that'll be three to four months before the actual work is completed, but the goal right now is getting the road open so that we can have traffic going both ways.
Any timeline idea on when we can open that road, do you think, in your best estimate?
My estimate is a month, once we get them back on site.
But we don't know when we're going to get them back on site.
As soon as we have the agreement signed, they'll be giving us a schedule, and then we'll know better.
Okay, so we're looking at least one month plus?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's been such a long time, that's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Nothing, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, just a couple things, in District 4, we had two ribbon cutting events, we had the ribbon cutting for the Cordova Road seawall, which was a wonderful feat on behalf of our Public Works Department, thank you, everybody who was involved with that. Was it 2,100 feet, was it, or 2,400 feet, I forget, almost half a mile?
Twenty-two hundred feet.
Twenty-two hundred feet. We also did a, I shouldn't say ribbon cutting, it was a groundbreaking event for the Edgewood and River Oak Stormwater Improvement Projects. I know that was going to work out really well, because it was blessed by the, by the
Father from Saint Jerome's.
Yeah, Saint Jerome, exactly. So this weekend, oh wait, I'm not going to get to that, we had the Fort Lauderdale Fun and Wide Festival this past weekend, extremely well attended, very proud of Convention and Visitors Bureau and all the organizations that helped make that a success. Hopefully we can build on it and and see continued interest in the years ahead. I attended, along with Commissioner Glassman, the 100th Anniversary Celebration for Bonnet House, and great to see that this historic treasure is still going to be part of our legacy here in Fort Lauderdale, and we need to continue to support it as a community, it's a great, great is it not? Is it not?
I said it's a good thing we got that designated.
Oh, yeah.
The land designated on that?
Yeah, and the monkeys.
The whole land.
All the land is.
The land is definitely designated.
What a wonder, it must be beautiful.
And not just the land under the house.
Oh, the broader parcel.
Oh, yeah, the whole Bonnet House, it's amazing, have you been there?
Are you finished?
Beautiful. Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. And then, over the weekend, excuse me, yesterday, participated in the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service Project that was done in association with the YMCA, I had a chance to take a tour of the YMCA, it's amazing. It's just, the quality of the finishes and the space is just amazing, I mean, it's just a wonderful, wonderful structure, so thank you YMCA, thank you the city, and all the other partners who participated in making that happen. The 26th Ignite Broward has its kickoff reception at the Museum of Discovery and Science, that's at 6:00 PM, and we have our goal-setting workshop, right, January 27th?
I think that got deferred.
No, we're back on the 27th.
We are?
And it's on everybody's calendar.
Oh, my God, okay.
So, yeah. So you have to reschedule your Zumba class.
Next, thank you. Back on the 27th, when did that happen?
I was late last week.
Oh, thanks for that.
What time on the 27th are we going?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM to noon?
9:00 to 1:00.
9:00 to 1:00?
1:00 should be served.
Keep in mind, when we first were involved in this, Commissioner McKenzie and I, it's three days. I don't know what, I don't know what we did in three days.
It was my suggestion to cut it down.
Yeah, well, your suggestion was well taken.
That's a whole week.
So the Sea Glass, the Sea Glass event is very important, it's a fundraiser for cancer, and I hope to be there on Sunday myself, and it's really a wonderful thing that the Venice Magazine and all the other contributing partners do to make that a success. And so I guess that's it, Mr. City Manager, do you have a few thoughts you want to share with us?
Yeah, I've just got one, actually, tonight, and then one that I was going to have, I'll talk to you about offline after the after the meeting. This is sort of just a tip of our hat, and I guess I need to bring it up, that the county has reached out to us. I still can't get a UDPA meeting, I know you've all been asking for it, I know the mayor's been asking for it too, I still can't get a date for a joint meeting with the with the County Commission. But I am in correspondence of a letter from their transit group, that they're about to enter into a consulting contract, apparently, to look at what running the transit operation would be out of the eastern part of our City Hall parking deck. We've always said that that would be a suitable temporary location, it would not take away all first level parking at City Hall, but that they could operate the bus depot function while the joint government complex is being constructed from the east part of the first floor of our City Hall parking deck. They want to just hear something from us that says that this is more than just Chris saying that the parking deck is a decent idea, is a temporary location. I think it would be satisfactory to Broward County if I just looked to you all as a commission and said, does anybody object to that offer of being able to use our facility for the eastern part of the lower, first floor of the parking deck, so we can get this project moving? If we're going to have a joint government complex for remediation of the environmental issues, the first thing, that means they've got to be off the site.
Well, all right, this begs the next question, what is going on with this project? I mean, we haven't had a meeting in months, we have no idea what's really going on, I'm hearing just anecdotally that, you know, there's a there's a contamination issue, there's going to be a delay, we've got a, you know, this thing with the having to find an alternative site for the bus station. I mean, I've asked continually, over the last four months, we need a meeting, just to see where we are with things, and we continue to be rebuffed by the county's representative, and I, don't you think we should all kind of like know what's going on?
Yeah, maybe we should
And the other option is we could
Do our own brand-new building by ourselves?
We could schedule a meeting.
I mean, let's just figure out what we want to do.
We could do, we could do a couple of different things, we could pick a date, schedule a meeting, and see if they show up.
Show up?
Yeah, well, I think that's important. I mean, I think we really need to find time within the next two to three weeks, and just, you know, give them, give them, like, give them dates, let's just pick, give them
Three days.
Give them three dates, and then just say, show up for one, you know, tell us which is best for you, because we're going to have a meeting during one of those three dates, I'm tired of waiting. It'll be six months.
Was it six months since our last?
At least.
When was our last meeting?
I could look it up.
I don't understand
I don't think it's quite that long, but it's too long.
Just to touch base, to move this forward.
Yeah, keep it moving.
We have no idea what's going on.
I just June.
June?
And if it was just me asking in a vacuum, and they were just ignoring me, but the mayor's been asking too, very, very vocally.
I just texted Mayor Udine, and I said, can we pick a date for the next UDPA meeting, he said up in tally, but yes, so let's just, okay, I'm happy to try to push for a date.
Well, let's give them three dates, and pick, and let them pick one, and then let's just move forward with this.
Right.
With respect to our indicating, we haven't changed, if this project moves forward, we're still willing to allow them to use the first floor of our parking deck as a transit option, correct, does anybody object to that?
That was your question, right?
That's my question.
That's, that's all.
Fine.
As long as it moves forward.
Do buses really go in and out of there during?
Well
I mean, if it doesn't go forward, we might, yeah.
If we don't move forward, they won't be using the first floor, am I correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Yes.
Right.
Commissioner figured it out, I agree with him.
Yes, yes, for now.
Chris?
Yes.
You just let them know that we're going to build our own governmental center for our Fort Lauderdale, and the tunnel's going to go right under their old building, the present county
If they approve the tunnel.
Governmental Center.
It's going to be a grid.
If they approve our recommendation.
We're going to do our own tunnel, the tunnel's going to go right under the governmental, Broward County Governmental Center.
Alright, also, one last thing, there's one last thing, the city manager wants to let you know that the county has been making plans to send a delegation to a business conference in Dubai at the end of March, and and we've been to toying with the idea of joining with them, you have any thoughts, does anyone wants to participate? I mean, you got to pay your own way, but anyone want to participate, the city's going to buy, what are we talking about, buying a booth? Sharing a cost of a booth with the county?
We're still in discussions.
Trade show, basically.
First thing we need to decide is if we're going to send a small, and I would suggest it to be very small
Right.
delegation, and if we are, then I just, yes, to your point, I wanted to make sure before we really put any effort into planning, especially something as far away as a as a government trip to Dubai, that the commission was just at least on notice of it, and see if there's any major objection.
So we, we Yeah, so we were, so when Commissioner Holness had that FITC conference, we, there was a fellow from Dubai who was there, who was the head of this conference, it's like the Davos of the Middle East, and he personally invited the city, and said, you know, hope he can come. I spoke to him about financing for our beach, our downtown-to-beach tunnel, and and how that could be monetized through private investment, and he was all ears, he just said, this sounds, it sounds not like a lot of money, he said, you know, so let's talk about it when you come to Dubai. So, there are opportunities for going, so I just wanted, I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention, anybody have any thoughts about it? You know, just let the, let the city manager know. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor, I have one very quick housekeeping matter. A few weeks ago, I sent you an email regarding my proposed change to the form of our resolutions, which would include a block that has your individual names that would indicate whether you're voting aye, nay,
How you voted on the resolution?
Absent or abstain, most cities in Broward County follow this format, and I figured that if we follow suit, I know some discussion's been had before in previous meetings, so I just want to make sure you're all on board in this regard before we make any changes.
Okay.
Why would my name even have to be on it, if I oppose it?
To show that you
I don't participate in, why would my name have to be on something that's not, in my opinion, a legal document of the city?
It would say that you voted no.
Yeah, but it's my name still on it.
Right, but it says that you voted no, or you weren't here, or you abstained?
Well, your name's in the minutes anyway, Commissioner McKenzie.
I get that part, but I'm saying sending it somewhere with my name on it, what I have an issue with?
Again, it's just a proposal, if you all
I don't want my name associated with a period.
I didn't hear the end of that, I'm sorry. I don't want his name appropriated.
With a period, if it's something I don't believe in, it's a belief factor, okay? So there's nothing you can do to make me change how I feel, I don't have a problem with what you do, move it forward with your names on it.
But this is just a form, isn't it?
See, you don't want to do that.
Okay.
I would like my vote to be reflected.
I'm fine with the form.
Serve individually, my will is not to have my name, if they want to say no, they want to say yes?
Well, I, if I make the change, I have to have all of you on there, because then it's inaccurate record, because then you're not part of the commission. So I have to have either everybody or nobody.
Then it makes, then it makes me not a part of the commission, makes me not a part of that piece of paper.
But I have to correctly reflect the votes, and if your name is not on there, it's not correctly reflecting it, so it's either everybody's on there, or nobody's on there.
Well, can we vote on whether everyone should be on it, or no one should be on it?
It's it's up to the City Commission as to what the form would be, so it would be by majority vote.
So, alright, so do you want to vote on it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's the only way we're going to answer the city.
Alright, so, someone make a motion?
Does it have to be a consensus, I mean, what's the, what does the vote have to be?
Three.
Three?
Three.
We're in conference, we're in conference.
No, but you're not voting on an official item, you're giving me guidance as to a change.
You don't
I need to vote on it by resolution, ordinance, or motion, you're giving me guidance as to whether our forms are going to change, so I don't, it doesn't need to be at a regular meeting.
I'm fine with the new form.
Alright, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
No, we're not doing
No motion, there's no official vote, I just need guidance from you.
He's a guy, he needs a consensus.
I support it, I mean, it's always, it's already of record as to how a person voted.
Right.
So
Yeah, you, you agree.
You got three, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with that, I have a problem with you trying to oppose something on my will. It's your five, three gets it, I respect, I respect the little process, have a good night.
Okay. Do we have three?
Yeah, we did, we have four.
Four, okay.